Monday, February 12th, 2018, regular meeting. At this time, we are gonna stand for a moment of silent meditation and a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. At this time of the meeting, we are gonna have acknowledgement of visitors. Now, anybody who would like to address the board, please stand, state your name and the reason for your request.
Sorry, I've got nothing tonight.
All right, move on then. Go to consent agenda. Looking for approval for 3.01, 3.02, 3.03, 3.04, 3.05, 3.06, 3.07, and 3.08.
I'll make that motion.
That's a second. Number 11, please. Don't need to. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Your eyes happy? Financial approval, we're looking for approval for bills payable area, approve of bills payable cafeteria.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, there was an executive session tonight. Decisions were made, and it was on personnel matter.
Sorry. Now, 501, 502, 503, 504.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll it, please.
I have a question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
On the, did you include the treasures reported on that?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, there was a handout, yes.
We're not gonna go into that tonight here.
What's that?
The handout.
Okay, so that's not included?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Redline?
Yes.
Mr. Strubinger?
I'm gonna say no, we need a new bookkeeping system.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Merciante?
Yes.
Mrs. Checkler?
Yes.
Mr. Chivarela?
Yes.
Five ayes, one nay, motion passes.
Sir?
On our agenda, we don't have 503 or 504, what are they?
Our treasures report and tax collectors report.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Athlete Committee, Mr. Merciante?
Mr. President, we're seeking approval for assistant softball coach for Ms. Nagy Placo, $2,000 split salary.
Any motion for that, please? I'll make a motion.
Mr. Strubinger?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Merciante?
Yes.
Mrs. Checkler?
Yes.
Mr. Chivarela?
Yes.
Mr. Redline?
Yes.
Six ayes, motion passes.
We are also seeking a motion to approve the assistant baseball coaches, Brian Schwartz, Patrick Joyce, and Michael Wagner, and all of their clearances have been verified.
So move.
Motion for that?
So move.
Second. Please, all.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Merciante?
Yes.
Mrs. Checkler?
Yes.
Mr. Chivarela?
Yes.
Mr. Redline?
Yes.
Mr. Strubinger?
Yes.
Six ayes, motion passes.
We are also seeking approval for the acceptance of resignation for head cheerleading coach, Ms. Julie Romanesco.
I'll make that motion.
That's, you mean, all in favor?
Yep, all in favor. Opposed? Opposed.
And finally, approval posting position for head cheerleading coach.
So move.
All opposed?
Was there a second?
Second, I'm sorry. How much is the head coaching job pay?
For the cheerleader?
Yeah.
It's not in here, Jerry, I don't know.
Lauren?
I don't think it's that much.
I'll tell you in a second.
Because they do all the sports, right?
Yeah, that's almost fair.
She's put in about 28 years for that.
Yeah, did her last job too.
28 years.
It's a shame.
20 years as assistant and eight years as a head.
$3,975 is the head coaching position.
What's the head coach for a regular sport?
It varies, anywhere from...
That's $3,000.
$3,975.
Right. It's not $3,900. I just wanted to make that point.
Oh, yeah.
$3,975. $3,975. It's your eyes.
You can't put your name out there.
That's a great stipend, Jerry.
Yes, get anywhere from $33,135 to up to, up to $6,720. And it's based on the tiers that they are, which was set, I believe, based on the...
From $3,000 to $7,000, did you say?
Six.
Six?
$3,100, oh wait, what? Which, what are you looking for?
Who's the regular head coaches?
Salary is $3,975. $3,975 is a cheerleading salary.
That was Julie's salary, right?
Yeah, right, and you're right.
Up to $6,720.
Range from $3,135 to $6,720.
To start, or is that maximum?
That's max, that's max.
$6,175?
Yeah.
Something like that.
And again, my understanding, from what Bill McMonial told me when I took over, was that the coaches are based on tiers based on the minimum revenue that was brought in.
Yeah, they all lose money.
Oh, every single sport, absolutely.
Every single sport loses money?
Until we get our big TV contract.
We had, was asked whether we should do the $3,000 for the academic team to go to that scholastic scrimmage. Where are they going, Lauren?
Atlanta.
Atlanta?
Atlanta.
That's like a regular extracurricular activity. But anyway, go ahead, yes.
So, we had a motion and a second?
Yep.
And it's all in favor?
So are we gonna post that?
That's what we just...
I know, but are we gonna post it at that salary or...
The salary is set by our extracurricular, so yeah.
So that's what the new cheerleading coach is gonna get?
Yeah, the position is set based on a percentage of the teacher's contract. And that has been like that for, well, 11 years ago.
So $4,000. Do they have an assistant coach too?
Yeah, two.
Two assistant cheerleading coaches? Are they salaried or volunteered?
They're salaried. The receipt is signed then.
Yeah, the receipt is...
They're not salaried.
Are you good, Johnny?
Pretty good, thank you.
I'm good, Mr. President.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Committee report cafeteria building committee, Mr. Chivarela?
Yes, as discussed in executive session, we will be setting up a building and cafeteria meeting shortly. Other than that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Did you make a date, by the way?
No, no, I'm working on a few things first.
Carver, Carr, and Technic, what you do? Mr. Strubinger?
Yes, the budget for 2018, 2019 is in front of you there. No additional plus to Jim Thorpe. So, I'll be asking to take a vote on the budget at our next regular meeting. So I have to say, thank you.
You're welcome. Committee report for our carbonly high intermediate unit, there's nothing really. I have a meeting coming up May, March the 20th. And they sent the report around, and they're asking for a nominee for the CLIU Board of Directors from our school district. So you need a nominee.
For what?
Need a nominee, it's gonna be on the board for carving LEI intermediate.
Well, you're on that right now, right?
Well, you need to nominate somebody for it.
By when?
Well, it should be done now because I gotta send the report back in.
So, I'll nominate, you can go back down there, Dennis.
For three-year term beginning July 1st, 2018 through 2021, so there's some time.
Well, I'll accept a nomination. I'll second that. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
If he comes over, your situation changes, you just have to step down.
Yeah, I know. Thank you very much. Curriculum Committee, Dr. Prince, if anyone's not here, does anybody would like to, anything going on?
No.
Then we have something in the superintendent's report. Is that confidential? Mr. Gasper, is that confidential?
Curriculum?
Yeah.
What you were gonna... No, no, great. That'll all be discussed at our next curriculum. Those are things we had planned to discuss, but since the meeting was canceled.
Legislative Committee, Mr. Strubinger?
Yes, the, as you know, there's gonna be an election for the new governor. It appears that, from what I read on the finances of the state, there's more money coming in than they anticipated. So maybe we'll get more money from the state too, with regard to basic end funding. So, I would say, oh, I'm trying to set up a legislative meeting with Representative Heffley. We always had one of those every year with the five districts, but now, for some reason or another, I think the last one we had was at our commons area in high school about three or four years ago, it seems to me now.
Why don't you sit and talk to him and ask him to come to one of our meetings?
I did say that to him.
You did?
Yeah, I said, "We need to talk about, you know, keeping him informed and he informing us what's going on school-wise." So that's all I have there.
All right, you're on next again, Finance Insurance Committee. No, the Accounting Community College.
College, yes. There is an at-large position on the Board of Trustees available, if anybody wants to run for it. You can get the application from LTRIC. That's in addition to all of the nine member schools who own the college, us being one of them, has a representative there. But there is an at-large position right now open. I think we have three at-large trustees on that board. That seems, the Donnelly site, it seems to be moving, and that seems to be coming together at no additional funds to the district. Swapping the old LEI Portland Cement Company building for the Morning Call building. But what I didn't like about it, but being as it was revenue neutral, I went for it, is the fact that we're gonna have a condominium in that building, the new building, all remodeled with 10 additional classrooms. That site continues to grow, that's Allentown site where LTRIC, they have 900 students go there on a regular basis. So, that's gonna be, I'll give more information as that develops. The new site, it's just right down the corner, just right down the street on Sixth Street where the Morning Call building, they moved their entire operation out to New Jersey. So that's there, and there's some available, additional room there, so available for the college also, as it grows. I think they have to take that option up in two years though. I'll give more information as that comes.
Thank you. Finance and Insurance Committee, unfortunately, Dr. McGinley isn't here tonight, so Mr. Chivarela, would you wanna take that, please?
No, really. I'll do it, I'll do it, Dan.
Ron? Go ahead.
Approved Carbonly High Intermediate Unit number 21, 2018-19 operating budget?
I'm gonna have a motion.
Yeah, I need that approval.
Second.
Okay, can I, Dennis, is our plus going up there?
No, it came down.
Came down?
Yes.
So what's...
Do we have to roll that?
Yes.
Mr. Merciante?
Yes.
Mrs. Checkler?
Yes.
Mr. Chivarela?
Yes.
Mr. Redline?
Yes.
Mr. Strubinger?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Six ayes, motion passes.
Also 1402, approve of LTRIC 2018-19 operating budget?
I'll make that motion.
So move. Second.
What is that? You know? What is it, Dennis?
The budget for the...
What?
Carbon.
Oh, you...
Carbon.
Oh. LTRIC?
Yes.
You had the budget for the ALF.
That's right, that's right. Excuse me.
Yes.
Mr. Chivarela?
Yes.
Mr. Redline?
Yes.
Mr. Strubinger?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Merciante?
Yes.
Six ayes, motion passes.
And 1403, approve the accelerated budget opt-out resolution, which is, we're not gonna raise taxes, is that correct?
It's the resolution that states you will not raise taxes above the index.
Okay.
So move.
I'll second. Mr. Chivarela?
Yes.
Mr. Redline?
Yes.
Mr. Strubinger?
Oh, yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Merciante?
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Checkler?
Yes.
Six ayes, motion passes.
Anything else, sir?
No, that's it.
Policy of Personnel, Mr. Checkler?
I have one added. I need, seeking approval for unpaid leave of absence for employee number 1247 until the next board meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Do you want to roll that one? Mr. Redline?
Yes.
Mr. Strubinger?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Merciante?
Yes.
Mrs. Checkler?
Should I crack my ice cold part? It's up to you. Yes.
Mr. Chivarela?
Yes.
Six ayes, motion passes.
Is that it, girl?
That's it.
Transportation and Security, Mr. Redline?
1601, approve of solicitor bids for two school vans. We have two vans with flunked inspection two years ago, but we wanna try to replace them, and we do have the money in the budget for that.
Didn't we just order, didn't we just order some vans?
No.
Nope. We got them at the very beginning of last year. They were...
There's something about COVATCH giving us a good price on something.
Well, they, even if they give us a good price on something, we still have to go out, we have to go through the bid process.
Yeah, I know, but didn't we discuss that and approve that before?
We did not approve that.
That was out on the board.
We talked before about buying a new van a year.
Okay.
This was a couple of years ago.
I just thought we had approved the, buy the two vans.
We're not looking for new, we're looking for used that we can buy, keep it under budget.
And again, when we go out to bid, we ask for bids for new and used, we ask for both, so we can compare, because sometimes you can get an excellent deal on a used, but you don't wanna be handcuffed to a used vehicle because you might be inheriting somebody's problems, so we...
But we want to stay under bid, that's my big thing.
Have you guys ever checked the piggybacking went to state on vehicles?
The vehicles through the, like, the CoStars program, the local dealership that we've dealt with are CoStars certified for school vehicles.
Oh, okay. We've seen all their...
I thought it was... No, they dropped out of that.
Yeah, they dropped out of the program.
Do we have to roll that, or...
Oh, wait, no.
No.
Well, you have to afford the sale of the vehicle.
Okay. And 1602, approve of solicit bids for two school vehicles, not necessarily vans. Not necessary, there could be many vans, but we could get a decent deal on this. A lot of countries...
All-wheel drive, better fuel efficiency, still gonna handle.
Some types of transport, two or three kids in a stupid particular, a nine or eleven passenger van to do that. And also 1603, plus the vans that we have, they're all rear-wheel drive, aren't they?
Probably. Take 1602 first, because that doesn't call off things.
Yes, if we take, taking 1601 and 1602, the others fine, if we could do 1603 separately, that'd be great.
1603 has to be rolled, okay? But 1601 and 2 can be voiced.
A voice vote.
Okay.
So that's all in favor?
Yes.
Oh, wait, I need a motion, a second.
I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, got it. Now, 1603, approve of solicit bids for the sale of our two vans with flunked inspection.
So move.
So, second.
Are we gonna, are we gonna just hit bids for this, are these actually junk?
As is.
As is.
Thank you.
What are they? Do we know what they are?
Old vans, one's a wheelchair van.
It's listed on there, it's a 2005 van and a 2000 wheelchair van.
Trace that in, pick something. I know they won't give you much, man.
Can't, no, because you have to, you know, public entity, you can't do that.
All right, Mr. Strubinger?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Merciante?
Yes.
Mrs. Checkler?
Yes.
Mr. Redline?
Yes.
Six ayes, motion passes.
I have a little briefing here from our security director, what she did this past month. They did bus evaluation, evacuation drills were conducted to start the school year at all building locations in the district. A second drill will take place in March. During the month of January, we held our lockdown drills at each building, where staff and students practiced emergency procedures known as ALICE. Our local police, township police, were at each building assisting with the drills. After our drills are conducted, our crisis committee and the representatives from the police department, our local emergency responders offered our district assistance and resources, were staying proactive to emergency situations. She's currently working on planning for a spring lockdown drill, too. And that's for close watch of security.
Thank you, sir. Administrative reports, for your information, student rotation for the month of February.
New business?
Yes, sir?
New business?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, new business. Go ahead, do you have something, sir?
I know. I'd like to make, see if we can get a call out to the community when the meeting minutes, when the meetings are, where they're gonna be, if that's possible. Some people don't get the newspaper, you know, everybody's busy, if we can do an old call on a Friday or Monday, to let the community know when the meetings are and where they're at.
Well, it's not required by law, I don't necessarily have a call or a text message or...
All call, like we do with everything else.
Call, where are you, what are you in the district?
Yeah.
That's on the all call.
Okay. Do an all call for taxpayers, welcome to the meeting, let them know where it's at and the time and...
I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but we're the ones that get the calls where people get sick of receiving calls, so...
It's okay.
I'll let you know.
Well, let's see how it works. Yep. Thank you. Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
Anything else on the new business? Administrative reports, monthly, for your information, student rotation for February was Trevor Keaker from Jim Thorpe and Shannon Pitchner from CCTI. All right, student suspension, we had January 19. Our current enrollment for this year is...
Twenty-four sixty-five.
How much, what is it, you said?
Twenty-four sixty-five.
Twenty-four sixty-five, yeah. And presentation of a cyber homeschool, Mr. Gasper, please?
Okay. Give us all that key.
How about that?
Oh, about right.
Huh? You have to give permission off.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
and homeschool enrollments, and I wanted to pull the numbers on this. Unfortunately, it's one of those items in our system that we had to pull by hand, and we can get a little more deep, into this a little more deeply. But what we pulled is, although the numbers are increasing from just on paper, well, the, we're looking at, when it says NE, that's new enrollment, so what we're finding is that a lot of students, when they're coming to us, they're actually already ingrained in a cyber school and/or homeschool, and they move right into it. So, I'm gonna just look right in the middle here, the 2016, 2017, because that's just last year. You know, at the LB Morris, we had zero new enrollments, but we had eight students move out, which is kind of a higher number. The PanKitter, we had eight new enrollments. So those students, those students that come right to us from a cyber school or from homeschool and go right in, they never step a foot in our classrooms, so we had eight. And transfers, the T, we had three out, so we do have some transfers. So out of combined total, there, you're looking at 1,500 kids, we had 11 transfer out. And the high school, generally in the high school, this is historic, basically across the state, because we find that students, that's where we end up with more truancy issues and so on, and many students who are having issues with truancy and so on, they end up leaving our high school and moving to, and transfer out into some type of homeschool situation. That happens all too often, and unfortunately, Mr. Lozisco, I think, you know, I don't wanna put you on the mark, but we find historically, when students are having progressive issues, whether it be academic issues, you know, we hold high expectations at the high school. Or behavior issues, a lot of times, they're best result of, and trying to, instead of conforming or doing what they need to do, they end up leaving. They end up going to some type of cyber school or some type of cyber education. So, really, at the end of the day, we're looking at, you know, 17 students transferred out throughout that year. Again, very typical of a high school. And then 2017, 18 year, this is current, so we had, this might attribute to some of the numbers that we were looking at, is from Merciante. So at the LB Morris, we had new enrollments, 13, 13 students came to us, went right into homeschool and/or cyber education. So they were already in those types of programs before they even came to us, and six did transfer this year. PanKitter, new enrollments, we had four, and those transfers, we had eight students transfer out. And some of these, you know, unfortunately, I know of one, it was a set of brothers and sisters, I think there were three or four children in the family, and they all decided to move to, move into cyber school. So, you know, those numbers can be deceiving at sometimes too, when you look at a van situation. And right now, currently, you know, we had five students, new enrollments, come in, right in high school, and 15 of our students come out. And as many students as we have leave, we have students coming back to us in order to And as many students as we have leave, we have students coming back to us in order to get the Jim LaBarre School District diploma and so on at the high school. So it's kind of a working number, it's a fluid, it's a fluid number, it, it almost changes daily when we're looking at, at some of these numbers, but I wanted to just, uh, Mr. Marciani had asked about this, I don't know if you want any deeper information, but this is just some, some information that we're looking at, and, and that would attribute to that larger number we had, definitely a spike in, um, some of the new enrollments.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.